We have a call this meeting of February 26th. Jamestown City Council voting session to order with a clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Paterdiddy?
Here.
Reynolds?
President.
Faulkner?
Here.
Bonfiglio?
Here.
D'Versa?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dolezal?
Here. This time I'll ask you to stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the indication, which will be given by Reverend Dr. William Blair from the new creation of Sunday of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Please pray with me. Our heavenly Father hear our voices today. Truly, you have been good to us. You have laid the foundations of our intentions in the depths of our hearts. And you have blessed the work of our hands. Come now into this place and bring the special blessings of your presence, your righteousness, and your peace. Give that our mayor in obedience to you would lead our city with wisdom and faith. Give that this council in sincere unity be granted insight and solutions that would bring our community to a place of greater health, strength, prosperity, and peace. Father, we thank you in advance for you have promised to say yes to our requests. For we ask these things, we always ask these things, in the name of your son. Amen.
Do I have approval of the minutes from the January 29th voting session? Any messages from the mayor?
Councilmembers, in pursuit of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city in Article III, Section 11(c) of the Domestic Relations Law, I do hereby nominate Ashley Davis, 114 Livingston Avenue, Jamestown, to be appointed a marriage officer in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. Term will expire December 31st, 2027. In accordance with Section 310 of the New York State Real Property Tax Law, I do hereby nominate Ian Golly, 2891 Greenhurst Avenue, Greenhurst, New York, 14742, to be appointed as a part-time assessor for, uh, in and for the city of Jamestown, New York, to fill the unexpired term of Lisa Holby. Also appointing Heather Young Dial, 5697 Thornton Road, Cherry Creek, New York, 14723, as a part-time assessor for in the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for both of those appointments will expire September 30th, 2025. In pursuit of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Keith Ackland, 32 Harris Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The expiration of this term will be December 31st, 2026. Can you read it?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to suspend the votes and vote on any appointments this evening?
So moved by Councilman Sheldon.
Clerk, please poll the council on the suspension of the rules.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Reynolds. The clerk, please poll the council on the appointments.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye. We'll now move on to give opportunities for people to address the council. If someone would like to address the council, please step up to one of the mics. Give us your name, your home address, and the miniature marks to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council this evening?
Robert Sisley, 20 Barker Street, Jamestown, New York. Uh, once again, it's that time of year that I'm coming up to address the deer problem. We, we are, it's getting worse every year. Uh, the other day, I live on the corner, or right near Linwood and Barker, right near Allen Park. Uh, my next door neighbor on his camera had 34 deer on the corner of Barker and Linwood. And, uh, two nights ago, had 14 deer driving, walking right down the street from Allen Park towards Foot Avenue. And it's, it's a problem. And there's several communities, several towns and cities across the country that have, um, deer harvesting successfully. And the council has to, has to look into it. Uh, it's getting worse every year. And does the mayor think that there's a deer problem in here, in this, in the town? I'll ask her personally right now if she can answer that.
Certain neighborhoods have an overabundance.
Is it, is it for the city, or the DEC, or whose responsibility is it?
Um, Tim, I mean, the DEC really won't come in without a plan, I mean, but...
That's correct.
So...
We certainly aren't resourced enough to handle deer as a police department.
Uh, that's all I've got to say. You've got to have a committee, and I would be more than happy to help because this is getting to be a bigger and bigger problem every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. Um, I was pulling out of my driveway, everyone else, where I went by the plaza there. It was just like you said, they were, there was like six deer walk, just walking down the street by the old, where it used to be the synagogue. And they were just walking down the street, they were on the beach. And, uh, across the street, Third Street, right by Hall, and the truck almost did it. Uh, he stopped, he said, he wasn't going too fast, but up my area, there, there is, it's an overabundance of deer. I see them at the armory, I see them, like I say, on Hall, I see them on Third, they're all over. So we, we need to stop, I'm not, you know, I like the deer, but they're getting to be a nuisance to people, and that's one of my biggest complaints that people tell me. So if something can be done, I think I'm going to do it.
I would like to add a little bit of that as well. While I feel your pain, I've been advocating for the deer, uh, uh, to be reduced somehow, some way, over the years. And not only is it a nuisance, I think people need to realize it's a big, uh, uh, health, safety issue, as it is a public nuisance. Um, and I think as a committee, as a council, as a city, we should probably look at what outweigh, do, do the, uh, risks or the liabilities outweigh the dangers that the deer create? Not only from a safety standpoint, but from a health standpoint, with the Lyme's disease and whatnot. And talk to some avid hunters about looking at possibilities. I've actually talked to them about the plan that was introduced back in 2021. And these folks feel that there's things that can be done. But as, as a council, I think we're going to have to take a good, hard look at it. Um, they're everywhere. And I have neighbors that have little children that play in their yards, and their dogs are covered with ticks. Uh, we don't want that type of, uh, health hazard in our city, at least I don't. So we would, uh, I'm going to advocate us really working hard on that.
Hey, can I add one more thing? Free for... As far as the city council members, could I ask, maybe within the next couple meetings, that you make a list of questions for myself, um, or any of the chairpeople up there, as to, questions as to why, um, they, they shouldn't be done, or how we're going to do it, um, so that we can answer them in a timely fashion, instead of getting everything thrown at us the day that it's proposed. Um, can I ask the cooperation of every city council member to make a list of questions so we can get the answers beforehand?
I had some of those questions three years ago, and I never got a response back three years ago.
Were they, were they at the...
I can share those with you during a work session.
Perfect.
This is a voting session, not a back and forth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Step up, and address.
My name is Charles Martin, I live at 310 Allen Street, Jamestown. And I don't want to be a pain in the neck. I've called the police department several times, and I've come to realize what's going on is not their problem, okay? But I've, um, I've been a nuisance to them, I know, trying to give them to help with what's going on in my neighborhood on Allen Street. I'm delighted to see on the new business, a whole page for new housing, it's wonderful. I didn't know this, this is my first meeting, I called the mayor's office and I got a response. I was surprised, actually, I looked at my webpage, at my emails, and I didn't see anything for a day. The next day, I got a phone call, and I was so delighted, and I got a phone call recommending I go to the JamestownNewYork.gov page, and I find out about the council meeting, here I am. So I'm not, I would just like to be able to, uh, I'd like to get together with Mr., uh, my, my councilman, Mr. Faulkner, and we'll talk, uh, more, more inten, uh, more intensely about this. I just want to let you know that I heard that, uh, actually the person on the phone told me that two houses, 32, and I don't know the address of the other one, I think it might be like 314 or something, Allen Street are slated for demolition, that's awesome. I would really like to urge that those, uh, demolitions be hastened because there is a community of people that, you call it a community, I don't know. I don't know what they're doing, they're in and out of my house. Neighbors four houses down the road want to know why there's so much traffic going in along the 310 Allen Street. I can't, I don't know, I don't, I pay attention, I lock the door all the time, they hate me for it, but that's okay. But the people there are violent, I've been threatened. Uh, other people have been threatened, my, my next door neighbor, he's a quiet man. He says, you have no idea how many times people want to fight me. I said, why? I says, you're, you're a quiet man? He said, yeah, I am, I don't want to fight. It's not that he can't, or that he doesn't want to. We don't want the confrontation, we don't want the, uh, I have pictures I'd like to show. Eventually, I'll send them, I'll send them to the councils, or to the mayor's office, wherever you'd like. I'll talk to Mr. Faulkner, show him the photos, about clothing strewn down the street. Okay, across the, well, across the street, I guess not so much, but it's all over. The two buildings are, there's just trash all over the place, and the trash is coming to 310 Allen. And the trash is coming in to 310 Allen, I, I hate to put it that way. But there's nothing that, I'm just, like I said, I was delighted that I saw this whole page on housing, it's wonderful. And I just hope that everything, everything here really happens, you know? I, I, I wish I was to these meetings before, and I'm going, I would like to look into more and, uh, into the, uh, the laws, et cetera, the govern, the city of Jamestown. I was born here, I wasn't raised here, but I was raised around the country. My father was a vagabond, you know, it's all there is to him. We have a lot, but the one thing the guys, the man, the gentleman on the phone said to me, it's a generational problem, it has to be handled generationally. I would beg to differ. I would like to encourage each one of you to take a personal interest, because I think, everybody here, the whole building, take a personal interest, because I believe with all my heart, it's a one-on-one resolution. We need to talk to these young people, say, hey, what do you do for a living? I did the other day, I said to the gentleman, the young man, I said, what do you do? He didn't answer me. I said, you know, you could have a job, you could have your own bathroom, your own bedroom, your own apartment, your own car, you could have all of these things, if you just put as much energy into working a job as you do to destroy the, the neighborhood. And so I really believe it's a one-on-one relational thing that has to come from each and every one of us. I mean, I, I can't go out and buy the guy pants, I wanted to, and I was told, don't bother, they're just selling for drugs. I don't know, I, I was, I was just telling you while I was told. So, but I really believe it's a one-on-one resolution. And I want to be a part of that, and I hope each and every, I believe every, each and every one of you want to be a part of that. So help, let us help you, and you help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Scott Askewson, Florida Park. Wasn't going to say anything tonight, but the deer thing did, did make me want to come. Living behind Fletcher School, on the fields in the park over there, there are herds of deer after dusk, out there grazing, and then they, after that, they start walking to the yards. Sunday after, Sunday afternoon, coming around from church, coming down Smith, a couple deer ran across the road at 1:00 in the afternoon. It's getting more and more present, where you're seeing more deer in daylight. And I guess my question would be, especially when you live on the city boundaries with the towns, if the DEC were to get involved, would there be some way to have cooperation with Town of Bustite, Town of Kyneton, Town of Alcatel? To kind of, because, you know, the boundary is, you know, the South Street is 500 feet away. And we know that the deer go back and forth, because they know the city's safe. But it, and so it just seems like it's not just the city's problem, but our neighbor towns do, if we could really get some cooperative type of work. And Town of Alcatel, coming between, um, the Lakewood line and the Mount Fairmont, there's very few nights I don't see a deer running across Fairmont and West Alcatel. So just something to think about, trying to get some cooperation with towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I made that one. A rush here from Mayville, sorry. Melissa Paterdiddy, 346 Faulkner Street. Um, I've, I've lived in Jamestown pretty much my whole entire life, minus four and a half years when I lived in Austin, Texas. Since coming back to Jamestown, I've seen a lot of change. I've been a rideshare driver since 2016, I've driven in six different cities, and I've always been successful since coming back, except for when I came back to Jamestown. In 2019, when Eddy ran for his, um, campaign, I proposed a lot of things about transportation, and some things were ignored. Transportation is the key to all doors, especially since Lyft and Uber have become so popular. Rideshare came to Jamestown and Buffalo area because I fought so hard. I fought. I went to Uber, I went to Lyft when I was in Austin, I traveled back and forth from Austin to Jamestown, going through Buffalo. And in 2017, 2018, Rideshare came to Jamestown. It's a modern-day taxi. I love, I love driving for Rideshare. But one of the things that, um, I've seen in Jamestown is that people don't know how to use it. They don't know that it's here. And my question to you as the council, the mayor, the administration, is there a way that the administration, or anyone in the city, can help this? I currently have to drive to Buffalo to make any kind of money. I have to drive my car, that I now have in the last five months, put $3,800 into, driving back and forth to Buffalo. When I'm in Buffalo, I drive people to work. So with the talks of the airport opening again, and bringing commercial air service back to the city of Jamestown, I think that Rideshare would be a very good thing for the city where people to jump onboard and, and, and start to look at different ways besides just saying, oh, Missy, go out and find drivers. On several occasions, I've looked through, I've looked at Lyft and Uber while being back here for support. But they don't, they don't have, they don't have a place. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a thing like that. But if someone from like, I, I don't know if the principal planner, if that would be a job for her, I don't know if that would come with the development program, I don't really know, it's just a question. Because more rides, more ridership would mean more money for drivers. More money for drivers would mean more tax dollars. More tax dollars equals more jobs. And we always struggle, we always say, well, people can't get to and from. Okay, so in the city of Jamestown, it's about seven miles each way. I live on Faulkner Street. I can go to Lakewood and be there in seven miles, less than seven miles. So the average amount of ride in the city of Jamestown is anywhere from $4 to $11, okay? So in Buffalo, I'm 25 minutes. I take people to work, they work 25 minutes from their homes. So I, I ask you, and I, I don't even know if this is something that the city can even help with, but I figured, you know, I, I love doing this job, and I really wish that it could, it could be better here for the ridership, for people, when they come in the summer, the tourism. You know, these people depend on Rideshare because they've lived in places where it is all the time. And one of the things I always hear is, well, I use it when I'm out of town. So I, I, I guess I'm just starting the conversation, reaching out, and hoping that maybe someone can help. I wrote a whole bunch of other stuff, but I'm going to stop because I know that it's passed a bunch of time, and I, I do appreciate anyone, and I, I really just wish that, you know, I was just talking to a girl at Big Lots, and she said, I asked her if she liked her job. And she said, yeah, but I have a hard time getting to and from work. She didn't even know about Rideshare. You know, Rideshare is, is different than a taxi cab coming up the rainbow cab and saying, hey, I need a cab. You press a button, and a driver's there within five, 10 minutes, if not less. You know, and I really think that this is something that, you know, I, hopefully the city maybe can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the councils? Do you have any presentation petitions, requests? We'll now move on to reports from our standing committees. We'll start with our finance committee, and our first three resolutions will be sponsored by Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $336,460 in no sense on public improvement bonds issued of March 7th, 2021.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing Lieutenant McKinley and Sergeant Nickerson to attend the New York State Homeland Security and Emergency Service Tactical Team Leadership Forum to be held in Saratoga Springs, New York, from March 5th through March 8th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye. Our next four resolutions will be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, the district chief, participate in the 2024 New York State Civil Justice Discovery Refurbishment with funding an amount of $20,000 in no sense provided by the state of New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing Detective Courtney Shawna, the fire investigators Corey Ellis, Jesus Garcia, and Luke Ames to attend the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control Fire Investigation Corps in Montorf Falls, New York, 14865, from March 20th, 2024 through April 14th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute here the agreement with Estable Construction for concrete worth, street reconstruction 2024, pricing. More than 300 acres to happen, the total bid, not $1, $14,200 in no sense. Note, this project will be funded through the community, the community block grant fund.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Lexer Jr., PP, to purchase one CAT 920 wheelie, the streets division from Milton Cap, for total amount to exceed $194,452 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye. That concludes our resolutions from finance. We do have one resolution under public safety, and that will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution, a local law amending Chapter Charlie 41 of the city general legislation to establish an assessment grievance date as the first Monday in June pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law 512.
Thank you. The only comment I'd like to make is that there has been a letter of necessity for this position, uh, for this to move forward, uh, so we will be voting on this this evening. The letter of necessity comes from the mayor on the, uh, charter. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Paterdiddy?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Bonfiglio?
Aye.
D'Versa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye. Thank you.
Just before we go into new business, 20 tonight, as long as we're into, uh, public safety, just make a comment. I don't know if anybody's aware, but the PDU has a leak on Harrison Street by the bridge there, past, uh, Big Lots on the left side, and, uh, it's, it's cordoned off, so you can't get to it, but if anybody knows about it, or wonders when it's going to get fixed, I was told it's a good chance it's going to get fixed this week with the warm weather we have. They can turn it down and, uh, make the fix on it. So if anyone knows about it, it is going to get fixed, hopefully sooner than later.
It's a district TV.
Yes. Possibly. Let me, let me add something.
If the parts come in, it will be fixed.
Thank you. Move on. Nothing from Public Works this evening. Do you have any report of special committees? Report of city officers? Report from council persons on administrative boards? More than today?
Meetings the sixth.
No. Next month we'll get. Any unfinished business? We'll move on to our new business. We do have four resolutions. Under new business, our first resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Russell, or Reynolds, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city of Jamestown, in order to take positive steps to alleviate the housing crisis, adopts the pro-housing communities pledge, which will have us endeavor to take the following important steps. One, streamlining permitting for multifamily housing, affordable housing, accessible housing, accessory dwelling units, and supportive housing. Two, adopting policies that affirmatively further fair housing. Three, incorporating regional housing needs into planning decisions. Four, increasing development capacity for residential uses. And fifth, enacting policies that encourage a broad range of housing development, including multiple-family housing, affordable housing, accessible housing, accessory dwelling units, and supporting new housing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? None of this was discussed.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I often see this, people talk about affordable housing. This return from Florida last, on Saturday night, where apartments can cost $2,000 a month in rent. I don't think necessarily the problem here in Jamestown is affordable housing. I think the issue is quality housing around the city of Jamestown and the condition of the housing that we have.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None of this was discussed. As the light has passed low from the council committee. Another clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Pater Nitty.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Von Figlio.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
And President Jules.
Aye. Our next resolution on our new business will be sponsored by Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be it resolved that the mayor be, and she hereby is authorized to enter into a professional agreement with Drescher and Malecki LLP, 2721 Transit Roads, Suite 111, Elma, New York, 14059, to provide professional audit services to the city of Jamestown at a combined cost of $105,495 in no sense for the years of 2023 through 2025, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form. And note, the above cost excludes the proposed fees for JIRA and JLC, which will be in a separate engagement letter.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Aye.
Brackman.
Aye.
Pater Nitty.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Aye.
Von Figlio.
Aye.
Deversa.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
President Jules.
Aye.
Our next resolution on our new business will be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President.